Order, open session prayer will be Mike Hayes. The pledge allegiance will be Charmin Hicks.
Pledge of allegiance. Dear heavenly father, we just want to thank you for this day, Lord. Thank you for everything you've given us. Lord be with us tonight as we make the best decisions for our, in our school system, for our students and all of our employees. Lord be with us tonight as we go our separate ways and get us all home safely, Lord. Lord be with those that are home and sick, Father, and those that need your care and put your healing hand upon them. Lord be with your, our troops that are here and overseas and put your blessing on them and get them home safely. For in Christ's name I pray, amen.
Pledge allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, what I'm trying to do is do the, recognize the Richmond Elementary faculty and for being the reward school for the second year in a row. We'd like to take a picture with all of you. So if y'all stand and we'll just light up, line up in front of the table there.
Great job.
Yeah.
Probably say he has three feet.
Come on behind, come on behind the table up here.
I just like to say I appreciate everybody at Richmond School. We got a, we got a great group of teachers, Hayes, Franklin, everything down there. I appreciate what you do. You do hard work. You're underpaid for what you do. I wish they could use you more. I just like to add for one guy in class for teacher of the week in the AMI. It's Hayes, our teacher of the week. We don't need to be in front of it. Let's just hang us up here. Just get over your ladies. I'm blocking him out.
Okay, everybody look this way.
Hey, teacher of the week, smile. You can make a speech and we can get done.
Okay, everybody look this way. On three, one, two, three. One, two, three. Let me get one more and then she'll get some. On three, one, two, three.
Are you all ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. Maybe one more and one, two, three.
Hey, thank you for coming out. Thank you for the hard work you do every day.
I need a motion to approve the minutes of the December seventeenth, two thousand and ninth meeting.
I like that motion.
Mr. Dotson makes motion. Mr. Hayes, second. Okay, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Five additions or deletions to opposed agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add architect discussion of new football field to the agenda.
Okay, to the agenda or the work session?
The agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Five.
Five. Approve the January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty meeting agenda. Need a motion? Mike Hayes, second back. Wayne Abston. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we did the recognition of the Richmond Elementary School. Okay.
We've got a letter of resignation from Jennifer Schell, middle school cross-country coach. It is regret that I tender my resignation as middle school cross-country coach. At this point in our lives, our children are involved in activities required, increased time commitments on our part. This is a wonderful program that I hope to continue with enthusiastic and encouraging coach. My husband and I are willing to help a new coach that might come in to take our place. There are a couple of people that might be interested in filling this position. My husband and I have been very blessed to have started the team and had seven great seasons. Thank you so much for the opportunity to work with these younger runners and prepare them for high school, cross-country, and/or other sports. Sincerely, Jennifer Schell.
Need a motion to approve that. Mr. Dowd, motion be the second.
I'd like it second.
Mr. Dotson makes the second. All in favor, say aye. Motion passes. Number two on the consent items, approval of the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty federal project budget amendment. Budget had to be put into correct format for approval. This was approved last month. I need a motion. Dr. Sadler makes the motion, second. Mr. Abston. Is there any discussion on this? All in favor? Let's see. Oh, if it's a budget amendment, no, okay, it's, okay, it's, okay. Okay, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion passes. The new business, approve on the Livingston Middle School playground upgrade due to PE grant funding. Need a motion for this? Mr. Hayes, need a second. Mr. Dowd? Any discussion? Okay. Okay, all in favors, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Approve the second reading of the following policies. One point one oh six code of athletics. Three point two oh one safety. Four point two oh one class size ratios. Four point four oh six use of internet. Four point six zero zero grading systems. Four point six oh six graduation activities. Four point seven testing programs. Six point four oh five medicines. Six four one one, six four, six point four one one student wellness. And six point six zero zero student records. I need a motion, this. Mr. Sullivan, motion. Mr. Abston, the second. All in favor? Say aye. Opposed? Consider approval of to raise board members' pay to the same amount as county commission pay per meeting. Started in the twenty, uh, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. Okay, I need a motion for this. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you. Mr. Dowd, motion, need a second? Guess we go on to the next one, right? I need to give a second if you don't give a second.
Yep. Can I say something?
Yeah.
Since this goes in line with our next item on this agenda, would this be something that would be looked at with that second item by the budget committee?
Yes, yes, that's.
And will, if there is going to be a change, let it be done. At a school year with everyone else? Is that suit, something suitable? That way, if, if that were a change, we'd do a presentation with that next line item.
I'd just like to say when y'all meet in the budget, I'm on the budget committee too, but just my recommendation is, I'm not for a raise. If we're gonna do anything with money, let's do something with the kids. So right now, we're spending, we gave a hundred and fifty dollars for a scholarship. And I think the math is twenty-five extra dollars a meeting. You know, twelve months, that's three hundred dollars a year. Ten people, that's three thousand a year extra that we're gonna spend. If we want to do that, you know, for us not to pay the scholarship, just turn around and give you that three thousand dollars. And if you want to do four, seven hundred and fifty dollar scholarship so you reach more kids, uh, instead of the two or something. However you do it, I, I'd like to see that go toward the kids instead of toward us. But just, when that discussion happens.
I'll make a motion that we do that. Our pay be raised twenty-five dollars, which would be two hundred a meeting, which is in line with the county commission. And that twenty-five dollar raise go into the pot to cover our scholarships, which right now, we currently pay out of our pocket.
Well, I need to be saying that motion.
Yeah.
That's great, I'm sorry.
Well, I'll be saying that motion for this.
And I think, uh.
This is table because we don't, didn't get a second.
Well, when we discuss what you're wanting to do, I think at one time, we asked if the hundred and fifty could come out of our check or we have a meeting with no pay, and I think there's some legality around that.
We have to, we have to take pay, but we can give it back.
Okay, so just make sure legality.
Okay, is that something we won't take in that committee and present it at once?
I mean, if you want to do the raise and turn around and take that twenty-five a month and put in the pot for scholarships, that way you get three thousand a year instead of fifteen hundred, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Cause if you're, you're giving them to four kids instead of two, that's just more kids you're touching, so.
Would y'all want to take these off for tonight, let the budget committee meet?
No, no, uh, no, that's fine. We can, I mean, they go in line. The, I mean, there is a voting point on the next one without money involved. So, uh, I think it's something that can be presented in the next, you know, what's this one, January? I mean, it's something that can be presented.
In March.
Right.
After we, after we actually start working on the budget.
Right, correct. If that's suitable.
Well, I think the whole spa, pay skills needs to be looked at too. Job descriptions and all, and they go from there.
Yeah, cause I remember when I first got on the board, I don't know who was on it, but I know Rick and I were on it. But we were talking about, uh, maintenance, you know, if they got certain qualifications and certifications, and that went nowhere.
It's on our website.
Will them get extra money for that?
Like a lead technician, one, lead technician, two, lead technician, three, as soon as they can.
Yeah, I know we talked about certain things before that, but I agree, there's probably a lot of it needs to be looked at, so.
But what that job is, we're gonna have to pay for that.
So do we want to set a timeline on that? About sixty days, ninety days to review that and put that together, or?
Well, it would just need to be put in before we work on the budget for next year because both of these items would be what we needed to, uh, to go, go through there and see where it goes and then take it up from there.
Uh, I think that's doable, isn't it? March or something, we.
We, we will get our, hopefully, we'll get our initial, uh, DEP numbers this month. That's typically when it comes. Now, some years you get them every month. A couple of years ago, we've got one in January and we didn't get another one until May or June. And, but usually you get them every month or every other month, so you can start that budget process. And then by the end of June, by your June board meeting, or well, really before that, you're, you've got a budget ready to get.
When will we turn in our preliminary?
Uh, that's what I was trying to think. May? May, I believe, May board meeting, county court can go ahead and approve. And then it may revise when that's final numbers come in.
Okay, so the, the first one, we're going to, right, correct me if I'm wrong. It's, it died because of lack of second. Okay, or we're going to do the second one, the same thing, and then come back, say, next month and put both of these in? That, they go through the budget committee and, uh, and see what we want to do with it, and then back to the board?
I, I don't, me personally, I, I don't think so. I think anybody we can get on a salary position is a good thing. That's just, that's just a personal preference.
Okay, consider approval of the budget director to be a salary starting position in the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. Stand, uh, salary TBD, TBD determined, and it will be worked on in the budget committee and presented to the board of pre-approval. I need a motion for this. I'm not motion. Do we have a second? Okay.
I'll second.
Second it, okay, any discussion?
So, to be clear, what we're approving now is just for that to be, position to be on salary.
Starting of next school year.
Starting next school year, but once the budget committee there determines that salary, then we'll vote on that again. Okay.
You, you're right on the actual money.
Got it, okay.
Okay, since this is just to go to that, do we need a roll call? We don't do it, okay. All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Uh, special, let's see.
Yeah, so the architect's going to discuss our new football field, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Chaney and then go from here, so. Uh, cause I don't, you know, we, we approved the four point three on the whole one, we talked about letting them look at the other one. Uh, I know they've been getting some stuff back and I've been kind of pushing it pretty hard to kind of get a number. It's hard for them to give a number without getting everything done, so. So, uh, thank you for letting us be here tonight. Uh, we've got Brian Pierce, architect, in our office, and then Don Collins, civil engineer. I've met Don before. We're starting to gather some of the engineering, some of this, uh, survey work that's required for us to, uh, put some quantities, um, to the, to the project. And I'll let Don talk about it.
So, so, so we're actually, uh, John's trying to get hooked up, uh, Brian's gonna pass out. Our, our first cut as site plan, uh, we surveyed much of the Mason property. Still doing some, still doing some survey down on the property between the, the ball fields. And we're trying to research all the utilities, uh, so we'll know where we're going with water and sewer. Uh, things that we need supplied, utility services, for whatever we put on the campus. Uh, this is a very interactive process. It's, so tonight, what we're presenting is our first cut as a site plan. What we need now going forward, as we, as we start to develop and refine, uh, the site plan, is we need feedback from, from you guys. You know, we've got placeholders on here for orientation. We've got placeholders for orientation of, of the stadium. We've got, um, more than just the football stadium. We've got a four hundred meter track. We've got a disco station, uh, shot put. We've also got a, a soccer field, uh, on here as well. And so, uh, the things that we don't have, you know, are, are, we've got stations for most of the, the field sports. We still have got to put a high jump on here. And that's something that the, the athletic department wants to have as part of, as part of, of the project.
As we get a little further in the design, we can, we can sit down with the appropriate staff and whomever to determine what, um, track and field events. Let's, let's walk through what we've got on here so far. And so, in the old orienting district, real quick, your kind of top left corner here, just off, like, that's where the existing high school would be. This is the softball field, uh, right here, and then the baseball field, um, right there. This road would be improved for access. Ticket concession, uh, entry, uh, plaza area right there. Locker rooms, uh, dressing rooms, more or less, for, for the teams on, on the side here. The track and then home and, and visitor place.
Yeah, we're sort of feedback that we need from you guys is, you know, right now, we've got a placeholder for locker room that's got visitor and home side here. Do we want visitor side, on the visitor side of the stadium? Do we want home side? You know, do you want both teams coming out together? You know, there's, there's, there's a myriad of things that we need your input. And this is just a starting point. Uh, are there, are there track and field events that we've got shown on here that, that won't? Uh, do you want a multi-purpose field? We, we've talked about, you know, we, we've, for, for example, we've passed around for quite some time, a project I worked on in Williamson County, and a Redwood High School that had a multi-purpose field. Is that something that we want for here? Or else do we want just a pure football field with a soccer stadium works at? Do we want the four hundred meter track? If we're, if we're doing a four hundred meter track, do we need a, a rubber surface or an asphalt surface? I mean, there's just input from you, or, or at that point where we need some working, some working sessions with the building committee, uh, to gather that input so that we could make sure that, that your, your vision, uh, is reflected into the project. You know, and then also, after we get the site plan settled down, next step is, uh, we'll, we'll, my staff will start grading it to see, you know, what kind of effort we're gonna roll, are we looking at here? Are we, are we moving ten thousand yards? Or else, um, are we, are, are we gonna have to waste some, some, some dirt? Uh, you know, the site has got a lot of fall, a lot of contours across it. But also know that that great footprint is going to determine the amount of property that's gotta be involved by the board. And so, your, your influence on those decisions will help us make the most concise footprint because you've got some capital dollars that's supposed to be moving forward if this project is, is moving to fruition. And so, uh, once we walk away from here tonight, the things that we would like to do is, as we're finishing our survey, and is to schedule some type of meeting, uh, either in a work session, uh, building committee meeting, that we can start getting your feedback. So that we can move us forward, uh, get some accurate budgets that, that reflect the plan that's developed. Uh, and from that, you'll have, you'll be in tune with what's going on.
Nothing really I can add short of that is, this is, you know, basically three days worth of work. There's a lot more work that needs to be done to help us near that budget gathering.
Yeah, and, you know, last meeting, we talked about, uh, you know, and I've reached out to you and talked and, you know, kind of, hey, what's this gonna cost versus the other? And I know you and I talked, and it's hard for you to kind of sit back and say, you know, here's the dollar amount without us giving the feedback and telling them this is what we want or this is what we don't want.
Sure.
So, I, I mean, right now, it's kind of a situation where, you know, move with project A, here's project B that we brought up, and, you know, no fault to you, by no means. I mean, we're the one that kind of said we wanted to look at this option at the last minute. And, you know, now it's kind of getting to the point where I think a lot of people know that it's gonna happen, but when are we going to make it happen? So, um, you know, me personally, I think I expressed this before, and I know Dr. Winnegan, when I talk, when I talk to you, John, you know, I personally like to look at this option. You know, this, I realize it's gonna push the project A back, but long-term down the road, I feel that doing it and doing it right, you know, this is something that, you know, when Dr. Winnegan and I talk, you know, the current one's forty years old, I think. Is that right? Field, you know, so.
There, there are pros and cons to both projects, staying in the existing site and this. One of them is cost. I mean, there's, there will be different numbers when we get to that point. I mean, the things that you're, you're adding, the soccer field, so you're, you're affecting those students, boys and girls soccer, boys and girls track. We can design the plaza and the buildings and the restrooms and such like, that, uh, a section, I, I think y'all remember when we were talking about the concessions and the restroom buildings at the existing site? Everybody was kind of, uh, gassed at how big the restrooms were, just the number of fixtures that were in there. When you're serving three thousand people, that's just, that's what, what it's got to be. But we can design it at the new site so that a small section of both men's and women's can be accessible for people walking in the evenings around the track, for the boys' baseball team, softball team. So there, there are ways to impact a, a bigger number of that community. And then the, the, the track, uh, right now, you don't have a track in the county.
So, and I know this will push us back, and, and I realize that, and everybody's anxious to get going on the project. But I personally feel like that unless we know the number and know that we can or can't afford it, because right now, I couldn't tell you because we don't have a number, uh, I just don't want to be in a situation of two years or five years from now saying, well, I wish we would have done something.
Well, as, as, with regards to the track, um, there's just not enough room at the existing facility without doing major work to fit the track there. And so.
But also, as a reminder, there's also, that, that track added to the old stadium side, it's gonna require some more carpet around the edges. And so, as, as a cascading effect.
The only thing that worries me is we've not got the money. And we can't borrow no money for twenty twenty-six, is that correct?
Five years out here this year.
We can't borrow no money twenty twenty-six. We can't complete all of our funds, and we've got buildings, roofs and other buildings. We need classrooms, build on it a couple of schools. So I, I, that's where it leaves, that's where it leaves me, is where, we got to have money, obviously, for these next five years. We can't borrow enough.
And I, and I agree with that. You know, I'm kind of looking, the last conversation we had was, we said, hey, you know, if we want to go back and go to option A, we'll go. Then we'll look at a track at the current land now. A year from now, if we look at a track at the current land now, we spend a million dollars, then, you know, now we're pushing it to five point two, five and a half. And, you know, who knows? We may get close to that with this current project, and we could have done it all together. Personally, me, I just, I would feel better knowing that, hey, Personally, me, I just, I would feel better knowing that, hey, I got the option, I got the dollar amount, said, yeah, I couldn't afford it, and I went back to option A. Without saying that, no, we're not gonna look at it without seeing what the dollar amount is, I mean, I I personally would.
And I guess there might be a way to to phase this, um, where the track could come later, but we've got the room planned for it. At the existing site, there's no way to to fit a a track around there without moving the football field or having a multi-purpose field as well.
So, so let me ask you a question, if the building committee or whoever needed got with you and gave you input on what this needs to look like from tonight, how how, when can we have a dollar amount? What's the timing on that? And I know I try to back you into the corner all the time.
Yeah, we yeah, we should, we would like to have, we we can have building committee, we can they can they, can we come together?
They need a dollar for that. Right, it's us four.
It's us four right here.
Is that right?
I could work around my schedule now, I mean, it's. I mean, I could do it.
That's a lot of that all turned in that.
Yeah. One question, John, we asked not to ask you if if we get each one of these and say, uh, start A and finish A. Would we be able to do the old site and get in for fall twenty twenty?
No.
So, that's that's already known, okay. I mean, you're just just for the delivery of the aluminum bleachers, if 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 a general contractor already knew that he was gonna purchase those bleachers and he was doing all of the work at the at the existing site. All the concession buildings, the 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 restrooms, the ticket, everything at the existing facility. After he sent us shop drawings, um, and those were approved, year twelve to probably fourteen, maybe sixteen weeks for delivery of bleachers. So, there's four months of just waiting on bleachers to arrive.
Once you've decided on what what kind of system, right.
You said that to put the track, we made this uh switch from point A to point B, we call the original site point A, new site point B, in my opinion. So, you're saying that to put the track around the old system, point A, uh, take any old bleachers, of course, there's not enough room.
I I think the the property line or behind the visitor bleachers is is right up, you you can't push that.
Yeah, the the existing light poles on on the school side, on the home side, the existing light fixtures, the light poles, light standards are are in the way. And then you've got that drive, so you're 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 backing, you're you're cutting off access to that old paved area back there.
It's just too constrained up there. It's just too constrained up there.
He said, do you want it four hundred meters and do you want this?
I mean, I, that's.
This is.
I was gonna ask what our choices are, I mean, we want a legal or what do we call it?
Yeah, this this is T double S double A.
That's what we think. I think that's what we want, I don't know what they want, I mean, it's not a legal regulation size.
Why do it?
Yeah, why do it, then we're gonna run the high school.
You can push it out. You can have a a a track that's less than eight lanes, but it's not recommended, so this is an eight-lane track for first. Say again?
We discussed that, it was late.
Okay. I mean, we can we can work that for the reasons game.
I don't have to, we got that thing this Thursday, Nashville, but we'll be back for Thursday.
You wanna be here Thursday?
Uh, fourth, about this thirty-five, five, I got.
Yeah, I mean, if y'all gonna be in Nashville, y'all can come to our office.
Well, he won't be there, he won't be in the office.
Okay, okay.
Diane, Dr. Sed.
About some changes or restrictions, the high school still play, wouldn't it?
Yeah, they don't have much leeway as mad as around elementary does.
What's going on Monday? It's not getting that around, it ain't going probably all. I can be here, could you be here?
I could be here Monday night.
I could be here Monday.
What time is it?
I mean, they're out of school, I'm working, but I can be here that evening.
The twentieth?
Yeah. Anytime, could you be here at five?
Sure, yeah.
Do it, so you wanna do it in the evening? Yeah, cause I I'll have to work that morning.
I work at that thing.
So, that'd be fine, I mean, this this budget, I mean, we'll bring this on some on some bigger scale and where we can sketch, you know. So then. Here we go again, so, no, once I meet, once we meet with you. The question, the question is.
We'll we'll go back to the office and we'll get some work and we'll come back, I mean, how long do you think that would take?
Well, generally, the question is, are we gonna be able to capture everything in a single meeting? Generally, it's a.
I'd say let's stay here till it's knocked out Monday.
Stay here till we get done.
Randy, I'm okay, I I can come up with a list of program questions.
And decisions that are maybe made.
So, you guys can be thinking about it before.
Yeah, so if you if y'all have questions, write them down, that way when we meet Monday, and then we can stay here until it's all done, and that way, the quicker it gets back to us, we can look and see and.
Hey, the girls got no bill for this, I'm with you.
That may be.
Let's just do it tonight. Can you can you say tonight? I put you on the spot.
I mean, we're in in some regards, we're not around.
If you can come up with a list of questions, then.
Yeah, we need to make this something, though.
Yeah. Monday at five?
I mean, to do the job that you want us to do, it it we we need to prepare and get the information in front of you so that you can come prepared and discuss those those topics.
I know, and I'm asking you questions and trying to push you against the wall and stuff I don't have and, you know, we're the ones that ask you to kinda look at.
Well, in in all fairness, in all fairness, doing that, we we're doing it in service. Because we we may make a response that that may not hold at the end, and so.
All right, Monday at five?
That's good.
Hey, if anybody else wants to come, come, I'll find the papers too, it's open if anybody wants to come.
Monday night at five o'clock.
So, why you bringing sleeping bag?
We don't have, we don't have excuses, it's not ballgame on holiday, right?
We played all day here, did I say that?
Never mind.
All right, Monday at five, we'll go from there, thank y'all, thank you.
The twentieth? The twentieth?
Yeah. Okay, af- before we adjourn, the directors have had something to say.
Recently, we had a group of students from Livingston Academy who are involved in four A. And they uh went to Denver, Colorado, uh, to compete in the national four H competition. And our team in Family Consumer Sciences and the Skillathon took first place nationally and that constituted. They also took second place in life skill assessment. And then we had some individuals who uh placed in those things, in some of those things as well. We had a fifth-place finisher, Richmond Boone, uh, who's from originally from Livingston Academy, but he's at uh Tennessee Tech now. And we had a fourth place, uh, Michaela Bianco, uh, who's a sophomore at Livingston Academy. And then a second place, Mahala Boone, who's a sophomore at Livingston Academy. And then she also placed third nationally in the impromptu public speaking contest. So, that's pretty neat for all those things, and so, I just wanted to mention that tonight. It's uh the winning team members were Sarah Waits, uh, Mahala Boone, uh, Michaela Bianco and Richmond Boone, and so, that's awesome. Our students doing well all across this country, so.
Can can we invite those next meetings around?
Yeah, I I have plans of doing that, yes.
Anything else before we adjourn?
I got one one thing, um, I was like, if you hadn't been on the school website, uh, I'd recommend you go on there. I was scrolling through the other day and looking and saw a video and uh I played it and quite honestly, it was quite touching. The the Laugh Church here in town that just came in, uh, they would have what to have a dollar club. And um one Sunday out of the month, they'll ask everybody to give an extra dollar, and that money will go back toward the community. And uh our school system was a recipient of five thousand dollars.
Great.
Uh, from Laugh Church, and that was to help uh put items in need at each school, uh, for some of the kids that are disadvantaged and need things at home. I think the high school hasn't started already, ready on a small scale, uh, but that five thousand dollars is gonna be uh to let that go to all the schools in the county for to for the kids that need it. So, um, please get on there and watch that video, it's it's worth your time.
We have purchased many of those items already and they've been distributed out to the schools, they're going. Create some kind of storage area closet or something that kids can go to and access that that stuff, so it's, it was great, great.
Anything else? I need a motion to adjourn.
I make that motion right there.
Motion by Mr. Dodson, second by Mr. Hicks, uh. All in favor? Yes, all in favor?